So, missing tonight, we had Tony's not here. And Dakota is enjoying some of vacation, I hope.
Amanda will not be here. And Niles will not be here.
You're welcome, Jessica.
And with that, sorry, kind of long week. We're going to go into the approval of the minutes from our July 12th meeting, which was the special meeting. Oh, wait, no, it wasn't. So, we're going to do the July 12th meeting first. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 12th? Okay? Any discussion or amendments that need to be made? All right, all those in favor? And opposed? We probably have an extension too, Tom and Jessica. And then, we need to also approve the meeting minutes from July 17th. We met on July 17th?
Were those board meetings? July 12th was that special board meeting?
That was the regularly scheduled meeting.
Seventeenth was special.
Seventeenth was special.
I believe it was July 12th, and I haven't pulled up. I was not listed as being there, but I believe I was.
So, we're amending after we've approved this meeting.
We are, we are.
Okay. There we go.
Well, it does show here that I was there. It was one of them on the 12th.
The seventeenth, maybe?
Maybe.
You came in late once.
Yeah, you were.
You came in late once.
I didn't say anything during the minutes.
Added no value to that meeting. We'll add that to the agenda. All right, so, have we, did we get a motion on July 17th?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or amendments on that one? All right, all those in favor? And any opposed? And we have an extension with Jessica and you were there.
No, I just clarified that I was at the 12th, not the seventh.
Okay, so you're abstaining for the seventeenth.
Yep.
All right. Fantastic. We do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda, which are in your packet, related to personnel, and then we have an item under old business regarding sabbatical leave approval. So, I just want to bring that to your attention as that would be added to tonight's agenda.
And we'd like, the building committee would like to have an item for board consideration as well regarding the water district project as well, so we can actually allow that project to keep moving along. So, if we could adjust the agenda to allow that, probably a formal vote by the board.
Okay, so, you want to put that under 11C, because that's old business we discussed before, Rob?
True.
Okay, so, 11C would be discussing act on the water district project?
Yep.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
To Gordon, he's the chair, so.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Look to my right, not to my left.
Great. All right, for persons desiring to address the board, we have Michelle Metzler. Come on up, Michelle.
Hi. Michelle Metzler, I teach here at HA. I have been meaning all summer to come talk to you about a couple of positive things that happened at the very end of the school year. And I know that, here at HA, sorry, not district wide, but just here at the school. And I know that probably policy is not something that makes us all, like, weaken the knees on a regular basis, but there were two different occasions in, the very last week of school, that, for which, for me, policy played a big role, and I just wanted to thank the board for making policies that allowed administrators in my building and teachers in my building to feel supported in helping the students. And I bet you guys probably don't get a lot of policy feedback, so, here it is. So, the first one is, I had to write them down, on my hand. The first one is JBA, which is the harassment policy. For two years in a row, we've had some undercurrents of tension with Confederate flags in the parking lot at school. And it is really disruptive to students and to teachers when they are, when Confederate flags are being flown in the parking lot. And it was determined by Ms. Hawks that that violated the school board policy, JBA, the harassment policy, and that it was a threatening environment. I'm paraphrasing a sentence that you said, that it was a threatening environment, and that that, that they needed to be taken down. And that caused a sigh of relief among teachers here at school, and it allowed the rest of the students who were feeling uncomfortable to take their finals without having to think about harassment. And so, thank you for that. That policy worked, and it improved the atmosphere and culture at school. So, that's the first one. Second one is the ACAB policy, that's the new transgender student policy. One of now a former student was graduating and was under the impression, I'm not sure, I don't know the whole story, but what, the student was definitely under the impression that his name, his given name at birth was going to be read across the stage of graduation. And this was causing a lot of upset for that student. This is a student who had not been using his given name for two and a half years, I think, maybe even three years. And so, I went down to Mrs. Magnum, who's the principal at the time, and said, with the student, and said, "Here's the deal, let's look at," and she did the right thing, said, "Let's look at the policy, see what it says." The policy was very clear in saying, if a student goes by a preferred name and has done so, then they are considered to be a transgender student. So, the student fit that. And then, the next sort of, after the qualifying portion, the next was very clear in that all other students and faculty and staff at school must refer to that student by their preferred name. And so, the resolution was that in big black marker, that student got to cross out the given name on the card that they hand at graduation and write his preferred name down. And that's always read going across the stage. So, that was another huge success, that sort of a behind the scenes thing, but that policy worked really well also. So, I wanted to thank you all for that work. I know it's not to the marquee style, like, "Hey, we did something," but, but, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick comment on when she was talking about the Confederate flags.
Yes.
Now, that's happened two years now, right?
Yes.
So, I can't help but think that these kids don't really understand how we take offense to that. Is there any opportunity for education there?
Actually, I was going to, that's a good point. I want to thank you for making that comment, Michelle, because we actually learned from the first year. And with Karen and other people who went back, we modified that policy to strengthen it, to focus on the environment and the disruption concept, and that's what gave us leverage the second year. We also have partnered with Chief Rogers and the Public Safety with our School Resource Officer to discuss that from a legal perspective, the freedom of speech perspective, property rights, and all those things. But really boiled down to what Michelle's accentuating, and that is the integrity of the educational environment and the disruption concept that had become well embedded in the policy after the first year's experience.
Because the kids don't, the kids don't have the choice to come to school or not. They may think they do, right? But they have to be here, and so, it's the environment that we need to protect for them.
And also, if you meant Mr. Raymond, because I actually had, I was here that morning, because I had, I got the wind that that was going to happen, so I came over and Mr. Raymond met with the child, the student. And the student was very responsive and very respectful and changed his opinion and withdrew versus the first year, we had a little bit more, I won't call it vigilant, a little bit more different attitude or demeanor, if you will. So, like, a lot of things in life the second year, and we have learned along the process.
Keith, on another, to answer your question, Mr. Tracy's our new principal.
Yes.
Sorry, put you on the spot. We had offered, we being, sorry, we being the Social Studies Department, I teach Social Studies, had offered to lead some sort of educational something. After the first year, that never really got off the ground, but, Beth, sorry, speaking for my department, we would love to do that.
Right. It wouldn't take a lot of time. I just, I don't believe that a lot of these kids understand what it means to be there.
If they've had me, they should. However, I do agree. I think, I mean, I think it is a teachable moment that needs, that needs to happen. I agree with you.
Michelle provided a nice segue to item 7B, that we're going to hear from our two ladies on in-service training in a few moments on the LGBTQ terminology theme as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. That did make me weaken the knees, just saying, you know.
Well, policy.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Is there, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay. Thank you. All right, in terms of the Board Chair Report, I just want to formally welcome Jessica King, who's our new representative for Winterport. So, congratulations and welcome, and I commend you for joining at such a time of transition and learning for us, so it's exciting times ahead. And we all, I think, are pretty approachable, most of us, and most of us willing to help. I'm just kidding, we're all very, very willing to help, so please ask, speak up, and ask questions at any time. And also, I know it's on our agenda, I think it is, about last night's election.
Yes, it is. We'll be discussing that later, yes. That's under old business as well. We'll get to that.
But I do want to just take the opportunity to thank everybody for both all the feedback throughout the process. It was a learning experience for the board. We learned a lot, I think, along the way. I think it's only going to improve next year, the process and the dialogue as we move forward. And really want to, I thank everybody who took the time to go out and vote, no matter whether it was a yes or no vote, at least you participated, and I'd love to see the number of numbers increase more in terms of participation. I think our kids certainly deserve a bigger turnout, but thank you to those who took the time during the summer to do that. And special thanks to Heath and Rob for really leading the effort and representing the board so well. And special thanks to Admin, Emo, and Reagan, and Anne Legasi and her work pulling together, I think, a really strong document that we can support.
And don't forget Scott and the Communications Committee and all the work that, pretty much, I would say everybody sitting around this table and half the folks in the room were part of the awareness. Again, that's what you're saying, the 725 people or so that voted is less than 10% of Hampton alone, so it's not turnout that is remarkable. And even during the regular election cycle, there are only 1,400 that voted on the school issues. I thought the feedback that we received was good when it came to budget being too high, too low, or appropriate. I think by being so vigilant to try to satisfy all the constituents, we're finding that the votes are becoming very close to matching. You know, you're trying to satisfy the needs of the taxpayer, but also the needs of the district and the funding for that. And it was a pretty close match. I mean, it was only, the margin was 10% this time, at least in favor, as opposed to a loss of 5% last time. But still, that's pretty close, and I guess it shows, you know, if we went on a landslide, we'd either be really upsetting one side of that process or the other. So, if we continue to do our job, I suspect we will continue to have votes that are fairly close. But I think communicating and the Communications Committee, what you can't afford is to have someone casting a vote because they didn't understand, and I think we're doing much better at that, so hopefully that'll improve in the future.
Great. So, personnel.
We have no resignations to report this evening, so if you look at your agenda notes that came out Friday, and today we have three teacher and coaching nominations as well. So, let's start with the teaching nomination of math, grade six at Wagner Middle School, is Dorretta Callahan. You can see Dorretta has a certificate of advanced study degree, that's a CAS, in addition to masters, extensive experience at Lemond Elementary School, with 11 years' experience, her salary is $49,416. My recommendation for your endorsement, grade six math, is Dorretta Callahan, Wagner Middle School.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Dorretta, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Next one's a lady that could not be with us tonight, Gail Rowe. And you can see Gail is the nominee for Spanish teacher at the Wagner Middle School and Smith School. Gail's been in our district over her 40-year career, as you can see, a very extensive portfolio. Most recently, she's been over in SAD four at the Gilford School in the same container area. So, with that extensive experience per the collective bargaining contract, her salary is $61,985. My recommendation for your endorsement is Gail Rowe, Spanish teacher at Wagner and Smith Elementary.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Is there anyone?
And Gail will be with us for the management days. Now, we go to the adjustment, the agenda notes in your packet this evening. We move to the Point Five Science at Reed's Brook Middle School, Elizabeth Haines, has a masters and DS, you can see. Also, Elizabeth possesses extensive experience of 28 years in the districts there from Lincoln to the Belfast area. Her contract salary at Point Five is $33,082. My recommendation for your endorsement, science teacher, Point Five, Elizabeth Haines.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Congratulations, Elizabeth. Now, if you reference your list of coaches, I will make one adjustment. I'm going to remove the athletic director nominee of Al Barton, and also boys soccer Al Barton. Dr. Glenn Cross and I are going to reassess those. So, the removal of those two names, I would ask for your endorsement of the remaining list. Traditionally, we take these as a list collectively, so I would ask for your endorsement, starting from Hampton Academy down to the Wagner Middle School with the deletion that I noted earlier.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion? And these were all posted positions?
Yes.
Great. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Greg, would you like to introduce the gentleman to your right?
Absolutely. New head football coach at Hampton Academy, Shane Rogers, has extensive playing career and coaching career at Hussin University.
You're welcome.
Shane, I met yesterday, he's looking to, with some optimism, moving from the collegiate ranks to the high school ranks, and that's going to happen in two weeks.
Undebated season, right?
That's all we have. We still have vacancies, I will alert you. We've received two resignations in the last few days, and I'll deliver those publicly to you in September, but I do want to let you know that principals are looking to secure nominees to be brought to you in September, so we can be up and running. Also, I want to let you know, there's a little sense of awkwardness here, because what happens is the principals are working aggressively, or assertively, in a better way, will have that nomination to me probably the middle to the 20th of this month. I meet with those people and raise the recommendation to me, and then we put them in the management day and the first day of school, even though they're not hired by you yet. So, then, I think our board meeting is September 8th, I think it is. So, they'll be coming to you after they actually have been in the classroom. So, unless you want to meet August 27th, that's really the way we need to do it, where we have that one board meeting in August. So, just be aware of that. That's fairly common.
Would we be able to get at least, like, the short bio and names, just in case there's any questions?
I can do that. The other thing, Policy Chair Holmes, I just thought of, because I said that, some, and I'm not advocating it, I'm just letting you know, some districts have a policy that actually articulates what I just said, gives the authority of the board to hire, but then formalize it with you. There's some language of it, I'm not explaining it well, but you might want to be cognizant that if that, we want to miss it. It happens occasionally, because teachers, Jane, as you well know, in the end of July, first of all, just get other offers, their spouse has been transferred, so those things do happen. So, we're, I know right now, we have at least two in the district that we're looking to fill the next two or three weeks. But yes, I'll send you out the information already, see that. Okay, so that's all we have for personnel. So, we go to Superintendent Schools Report, we have Jane reading the statement tonight.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. We believe that our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and we believe that our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Jane. Item number two, I touched on earlier, upcoming in-service program. Karen has been involved in some conversation, along with Michelle and others, but more recently, I've had conversations with Kelly O'Brien and Kay Kiseak, who are here this evening. We're looking to bring in a guest speaker at the management day on August 24th at 10:00 in the morning, and her name is Sue Campbell. Actually, I've worked with Sue over the years. When I was the president of the Maine School Superintendent Association, Sue was the president of the Maine School Boards Association, so we worked very closely. At the time, she was also the chair of the USGAS School Committee, so I've had the opportunity to work with her. But the theme is that of LGBTQ and all the terminology and the conversation needed around that topic in public education, and Sue's been in assistance with that. The other thing that we're planning to do after the service on the management day is to have individual principals work with Sue or other presenters, and to put it down to each school on a very personal level. So, you can well imagine, Mrs. Briggs, for example, the K-12 school, probably would have a different conversation than Mr. Tracy would at the high school. So, just know that's the part that we're looking at. So, with that brief overview and intro, I'll ask Kelly and Kay to give us their sentiments. So, ladies, if you would, please. Kelly O'Brien's our guidance counselor at Weatherby Elementary School, and Kay's our alternative head teacher here at Hampton Academy. Kelly?
Well, thank you so much for being here. I wanted to just touch base on why this is so important. So, again, like Rick said, on August 24th, RSU 22 will be participating in a district-wide staff training that supports transgender students. In 2014, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the Williams Institute did a survey on suicide attempts among transgender youth. While the overall U.S. population report that about 4.6% have attempted suicide in their lifetime, transgender respondents reported that about 41% have attempted suicide in their lifetime. This is also about 20% higher than gay and lesbian respondents. This massive suicide rate is even higher when a transgender population experiences rejection, discrimination, victimization, or violence. Based on this research, as well as many other studies, we understand that this population of students at RSU 22 need to be understood and needed to be afforded a very safe environment to learn and to grow. There are a few ways that we can help transgender students and gender nonconforming students to feel safe and welcome here at RSU 22. An organization called GLISTIN helps schools understand what works and what doesn't work. One of the information, one of the interventions that makes the most difference is educating its faculty, staff, and administration, and that's what we'll be doing on the 24th. Other beneficial interventions include bystander training, using positive language, and schoolwide diversity programs. Among interventions that don't work, we have zero tolerance policies, expulsion, or taking action without addressing the needs of the victim or changing the school environment. This district-wide staff training on August 24th will be the very first step in making our schools as safe as they can be for our transgender students.
Thank you, Ellen.
I'm Kay Kiseak, I'm the alternative ed director here at Hampton Academy. I am also the advisor for the Peace Diversity Club, which is our GSTA here in the building. And I became involved in this for two reasons. One is professional, and one is personal. Personally, I'm the mother of a transgender young man. He's 22 now, and I know the importance of a supportive school environment and having, we've had a very positive experience transitioning and for him becoming, you know, transitioning from female to male, and, but a lot of students don't get that. And so, it's always been my kind of mission to help students and parents better understand that. And then, from a professional standpoint, I'm the, I am the GSTA advisor. The past four years, I've taken close to 40 students from Hampton Academy who identify either as LGBTQ or A, which is allies, to an event at the University of Maine-Machias, which is called the Rainbow Ball. And to see these kids be able to totally be themselves is really empowering. And a lot of our students, a lot of the kids that go on this event with me and feel so great on that weekend, don't feel the support here in the building. And part of it is, they know that the staff support them, but they feel like no one really knows enough. And so, I think, and it's going to be very exciting for me to let them know that, that we're taking that step to educate the staff and the administration, and that, I'm really excited about it. And Sue is an amazing speaker, and GLISTIN and OUT, which are the two organizations, one that Kelly mentioned, and then OUT is the one that Sue works with, are working together to create more trainings throughout the state for education educators, and they are very interested in talking to you guys about Hampton Academy hosting one of those trainings. So, I think it's a really great step forward, and I'm really excited about it for my students, and just from a personal standpoint as well.
Thank you, ladies. So, board members, can attend, put that in your calendar again, August 24th at 10:00. We're looking at the presentation, it'll be about an hour, right, ladies?
Yes. About an hour.
So, August 24th, 10:00, right here at Hampton Academy. That'll be after your breakfast, from 7:30 to 8:30, if you want to come for breakfast. There's your date. Okay. I also put into your mailing, the American Association of School Administrators, I've talked about this group with you before, this is the National Superintendent Group. I just want you to be aware that they're taking a very strong effort to really promote public education. And the primary reason for that, as you know, over the last two or three years, alternative education settings in the states have really become fairly prevalent, charter schools, homeschooling, and so on. And if you look at the last page, the third paragraph down, they actually have now an initiative they're propelling forward called "I Love Public Education." And my National Superintendent Group is putting a great deal of money and effort and legislative clout behind this. So, just be aware that if you see this on TV, or whatever the case may be, that public education is being something that's being articulated with strong advocacy at the national level. You probably will see school boards, probably parent-teacher organizations and so on, take similar stance, because again, more and more parents today, and rightfully so, are choosing alternative educational settings and really putting public education at a secondary level, if you will. So, just be aware that that organization is putting forth those efforts. Okay, we have no student, oh, Mr. Tracy, I wanted to remind you too, you probably don't know this, but I'm going to put you on the spot for a minute. We also need to have a second student rep with us, because Dakota is now going to move in senior, so we have a junior and a senior, so they always have that staggering. And I know there's a protocol in Hampton Academy that's probably in your files somewhere or so, but you and I'll talk about that more. Okay, Reagan.
So, for the Assistant Superintendent Report this evening, it's primarily about updating you on projects that are going on in the district. We have an energy efficiency project that's underway, supported by Honeywell. Most significantly, we're having lighting fixtures replaced throughout the district, both interior and exterior, and that has moved forward very well. We have Winterport almost 90% complete, and Hampton Academy is close to complete with the aspects that needed to be done here. And then, we have Reed's Brook that just got underway this week, and Weatherby was starting as well. In addition, here at Hampton Academy, we've had a building envelope project that's gone along quite well, that is almost to completion. And we also have a significant aspect of the project, which involves installation of propane farm tanks. Many of our buildings will be converted to dual fuel. And I wanted to let you know that the Winterport side of that project, specifically Smith School, will be underway here shortly. The Hampton campus schools that are receiving this will have that work done at the end of this full school year. We don't want to have the excavating equipment on campus while children are present, so we'll wait to do that at the end of next school year. And we're looking forward to what opportunities that will give us for options for fuel purchase. I do want to let you know that the Reed's Brook installation of the propane farm tank, unfortunately, has landed right at the same place where the Reed's Brook School Garden is. And we made every effort to ask for other sites to be considered, and Honeywell absolutely did that. It did come to pass, though, that we needed to make a decision around that, and we are going to with the school garden. But we have talked with people involved with the school garden, and we're going to give a larger site to the garden, which is an advantage. So, people are on board and understand what we have to do. But we'll get a full harvest this year, and if you've seen it, it looks great up there. We have other summer projects that the district is taking care of. You might have seen right out in front, we've done a clearing of some of the area in the circle, and it looks fantastic. We will have some minor paving projects that get underway before the students return. And you'll see that there, at Reed's Brook, for instance, tiling going on. At Weatherby School, we have windowsill replacement, and those projects are underway and will be done. A more significant project is at Reed's Brook, there's a water infiltration school revolving renovation fund project, and scaffolding has just gone up, and that will be underway the whole month of August. We do have a new kitchen manager that's been hired for Hampton Academy, and it's an internal hire. Cheryl Mayo will be moving into that position, so we're very excited to have her moving along to lead the kitchen, and we'll be hiring for her replacement in the kitchen for cooking and some managerial duties. And we'll be hiring for her replacement in the kitchen for cooking and some managerial duties. Wanted to let you know, too, that we continue partnerships with the Boy Scouts. They've always been, PAC 41's been a great partner with us. And at Weatherby right now, there is a bench replacement going on. And then on Reed's Brook Trails, there will be a more significant project that starts up in the fall, and that's gone through the town office for approval. And then for you to know that Children's Day will be coming along quite soon, on August 12th. And our campus supports that very well. We have a partnership with Children's Day that's been longstanding, and we continue to support that. And I believe that we may even have an RSU 22 table this year. We're going to pursue some ideas where we can be a partner as well in participating with children. So that will be underway, and you'll see many folks out and about to take care of those things.
As a matter of fact, Mary's going to give us a brief update on her participation in Children's Day. Mary?
So we were able to get a table at the Children's Day event. And at the table, what we're going to do is, some board members may be available, and a couple of administrators and myself. And I've been fortunate to have taught for many, many years, and I have a collection of books that's not quite this big, but pretty darn big. And so what I would like to do is begin to donate those books to children throughout our district. And so what we're going to be doing that day is giving away some of my well-loved books. And I'm going to offer read-aloud sessions all through that day where people, I'll put a list of what books I'm going to read when, and then invite students to come. I'll get some blankets to put down and so forth. So if kiddos wanted to take a break from all the excitement, and they want to just relax and enjoy a story or come get a book, then they're all welcome.
Very generous of you. That's very nice.
Okay, Karen, thank you.
Questions of board members?
I have one. If I remember correctly, last year there were some insurance issues with Children's Day. Did any of that come up this year where we had to cover them, or did it?
So we did pursue verifying that last year's approach was the approach to continue to use, and it is. So what we've done is secured certificates from the Pyrotechnics Company for the fireworks. Also, Children's Day has secured their own certificate for general liability. And then we also have one from the state Fire Marshal's Office. So we think we're all set.
Any other questions, board members?
I don't have a question, but earlier today, I emailed you guys all a photo of a letter that I received from Rachel Lyons about the cuts to the art department. And I received a second letter as well, also today, from Molly Swalick. And she asked me to read the letter. I'm going to read the first paragraph and last paragraph, and then I'll ask Rick or Reagan if you can have this scanned and then email to the board members tomorrow. But she asked me to present the letter, so I just wanted to at least read the first and last paragraphs, because it does convey the heart of the letter. She says, "Dear Mr. Cuddy, I enjoyed many classes at Hampton Academy, but art has long been my passion. I've been looking forward to AP Studio Art since the sixth grade, and I'm extremely sad to hear about the art budget cut, especially since they negatively impact my ability to take AP Art. With this cut, there will only be 17 spots for non-fundational art classes per semester. These classes include Advanced Art, Advanced Sculpture, Ceramics, Advanced Drawing and Painting, and Advanced Placement Studio Art. These five classes will all take place in one period, in one class, and be taught by one individual. This art cut will be devastating to the art department and its students. Of the 292 students signed up for art in the 2017-2018 school year, 100 will not be getting their desired courses. Currently, the Guidance Counselor's Office is unable to schedule my art classes due to this cut, which is terrible since my desired career path is to be a graphic designer. How many other aspiring artists is this cut stifling? Please share this letter at the public meeting. With thanks, Molly, a 2017-2018 junior." And I'll ask you guys to copy that off.
We'll do that, yes.
Any questions of board members?
I did want to say congratulations to Ruth Lyons. She is doing the BRI, which I think is pretty cool, and I'm excited for her. The Bangor Region Leadership Institute. So I was classed in 2015, so I'm excited for her. No way.
Yes, very much. Congratulations. Anything else? We'll go right into committee reports? Finance committee?
We have nothing to comment on.
Budget committee? Do we have any? Sounds like good. Athletic committee?
We don't have any minutes as of now, but we can get them to you later. But I can go over what we met. We met last week before our district budget meeting. We had, John and Jane joined us as members of the board. We had a really good meeting. We met for about an hour and a half. We, first item, we talked about our new football coach that was here earlier. We had a lengthy discussion about the multipurpose field, about where we are as far as use of the years have left. Talked about signage. And as I reported before, we're kind of stealing some ideas from South Portland. They have some signage. They have basically replaced their turf in the last few years. So Mr. Lauer and Mr. Tracy are going to go down there before our next meeting, talk to those folks, look at the campus, and then report back to us. And at the next meeting, we're looking at setting up a timeline for replacement of the field. So that we have something that, we can have an end date and work back from there, so we have something to go on. Because at this point, we've just been saying a few more years, a few more years. So at some point, we have to say we need to replace it right at this time, and we'll work backwards and see where we need to go at that point. We were just briefed on some of the batting cages. Mr. Lauer's got some great ideas for dressing up our batting cages, both baseball, softball. Talked about, we have a brand-new scoreboard up in Reed's Brook. We have one more scoreboard that we can put up on our middle school baseball field. We briefed on some end-of-season maintenance, some of our baseball fields. Mr. Lauer's got some great new ideas on a way to close up our baseball field so that we can save a little time in the spring when we open them back up. But one thing that came out of the, we were talking about our three baseball fields. And of course, we have one here, our board field, and we have our middle school field. But we have a field in Winterport for our Wagner School that we can't play on. It's basically, it's not even a field that kids can practice on. It's not quality, the quality's not there.
It's unsafe.
It's unsafe. It's owned by the Town of Werners. So in order to get that back to a safe field, we'd have to work with the town. So we need somebody, maybe our AD at Wagner, to work with the town along with the athletic community. But I just don't think it's fair to have these kids down at Wagner, that they're home, have Wagner pride, and they come up here to Reed's Brook to play. You know, and I've coached youth baseball for a while, and you can't teach a kid to, you know, to field a ground ball if he knows, if there's no consistency of how the ball comes up. So I mean, we need to, I just think that we need to look at that. It's not fair to have one of our middle schools that doesn't have a place for their baseball kids to play. And I believe softball, softball's the same way, I believe, right, Richard?
The same way.
Yeah.
We practice on the Winterport field, but have our needs here.
Yeah.
And even that field is questionable, I think.
Both, both fields.
Yeah, I mean, it's better than the baseball field, but it's.
Farm League, I coach Farm League, we play on both sometimes, and it's, yeah. So we just need to look at a collaborative effort.
Has the rec department in Winterport, have they tried to address that? Do you know, in the last year?
I don't know.
Yes, they have. But it's going to, it's going to need to be a cooperative thing.
Is that a safety concern? I mean, are we looking at possibly safety concern of the youth there?
I think so. What do I hear, the fences are bad and, you know?
The fencing is certainly a safety concern. The field conditions themselves are, are bad enough that, yeah. I mean, they're a little like windrows in some of the baselines. The idea of feeling a gra, I mean, God bless them. The little six- and seven-year-olds catching a ball in the nose because it's popping up off a clump of grass that should not be there.
And then they're going to be terrified to play baseball.
Yeah. I lost a couple this year because they were like, nah, I don't want to get hit with a baseball. Thank you.
So I wonder if that's a conversation that we could help lead with the town leadership and try to get some discussion in the community of Winterport around that.
I know that the Winterport Rec Director is chomping at the bit to have a conversation about it. He is excited to do so. So, and I think he will be very, he'll look forward to collaboration on it.
I just wanted, he and I, the Winterport Rec Director and I, we met numerous times over the last few years, and we have made some small gains. You know, they've done some minor repairs to the fence and, and some upgrade, you know, fix, try to fix the field, rake the field, things like that, some repairs. But it, it's going to take significantly more to get them up to game, to game shape. But we have opened the dialogue.
Yeah. And as is typical, you know, in Winterport, the way it's gone since I was a little kid is people volunteer their time and equipment. And so somebody who has a landscape business will come up and they'll drag the field, which is great, but it gets done once in, you know, a year, maybe once every two years. Because if these people are busy, they're volunteers. You can't demand that they go up and do it, so.
And quite frankly, I think it's going to take even more than raking. I mean, the field's got to be built up.
There's some rebuild, yeah, there's some rebuild.
Awful drainage and just, it's just not playable.
Yeah.
So that was a good conversation that came out of an unintended, one, for instance. We talked about, Mr. Lauer informed us of a program called Family ID. It'd be electronic signage, signing up, registration for sports, which also could be used for other parts of the, of, you want to just talk about that, Fred, real quick?
Sure, absolutely. I was contacted by Representative Family ID. It's an online platform that is used for basically all the things that we do. Credit consent forms, any kind of form that parents fill out now by paper and submit could be done, linked on our website. And from that, different reports could be run. For example, if the school nurse needed to have a report of all fall athletes that needed an EpiPen, you could run a report very easily and have that. Also, another nice feature is it can be linked to mobile devices. So right now, currently, our coaches get a packet of their players' emergency contact cards. They're in paper form that they have to carry around. With this, it could be electronically sent to their mobile device, and they would have on their phone all the information. So when they're on the practice field, the game field, they would have that immediately right there. So it's just something that I presented just maybe to talk about, and we were going to discuss a little bit more from there.
And something that wasn't on the agenda, but we had, we had some public attendees that were interested in lacrosse. In the spirit of transparency and thought's work, we had our athletic committee online, so people saw some of the things that we had talked about in previous meetings. And so last week, we were kind of bombarded with folks that would like to see lacrosse in our district. So that was good. We see that we have support there. We had a great discussion about it, and they were able to, they, children in the youth program, so they were able to brief us on some of the things that, some of the kids that were coming up through. And it does seem like at the middle school level, we have a huge amount of kids playing lacrosse in the Bangor lacrosse club. So I think the kids are there. And then lastly, I briefed us on this a little bit a couple weeks ago, but Glenn Byrne has made a request, has requested to play middle school football at our middle school here, Wagner-Reed's Brook, middle school football. So a little bit of history for those of you that weren't here that night. We, they have been playing, they play youth, Bangor or Orno. But of course, Glenn Byrne doesn't have a football program. They would, they can go to high school wherever they want. So they have, they really, they don't have a place to play middle school football. They have played at Orno, but Orno's not a choice for them as far as going to high school. They'd like to send their kids to a place so that they can play middle school and then possibly go to high school in that district. So we talked about that quite a bit. We've looked into insurance, insurance, we're okay as far as insurance. Our middle school athletic director, Reed's Brook Middle School Athletic Director, Laurie Matthews was there. Laurie has agreed to it. Everybody that was there agreed to it. So it's our recommendation as a athletic committee to move forth with that and invite them to play at the middle school level. That was it.
Is there any formal action that needs to happen in order to allow that to happen?
Well, Rick.
I don't think so, Karen. I think as long as we put in the minutes and the board is aware of it and endorses it, it doesn't need any formal application.
How many, how many children are we?
There could be as many as five this year, but that's, I mean, it may be five, maybe three. But, and then in the future, they have said that there will be, there are six sixth graders at this point. So those kids may possibly come over next year, but they would be coming this year because we don't offer a sixth grade program at the middle school.
Is a football coach aware and?
Laurie had talked to the football coach about it, yes.
I guess my only con, I don't have concerns at all about Glenn Byrne. I support that. I would just want to make sure that the coach is sensitive to the fact that those kids may be needing to have some team building to make them feel part of the, part of the team, part of the culture. It's just a little bit of a dynamic that the coach needs to be aware of so that they don't feel, you know. I, if, if the goal is to make them feel part of our RSU 22, gives these youth a great opportunity, but admittedly, it gives these us an opportunity to help possibly have tuition students in high school, right? So we want them to feel part of our RSU 22.
And at the same time, though, that, he's kind of melting, he's melting the Wagner students and Reed's Brook students together.
So just to be aware of that.
So he may not, I mean, it might be best if he don't know anywhere where they came from. These are my, this is my team.
That's true.
This is my team.
Do not put your address on the form.
We have, we have talked about a participation fee. I, I think we've decided on $150 is what we talked about. They would pay a participation fee to play. They're non-taxpayers.
How much do our kids pay for tuition?
At the Reed's Brook level, there's nothing.
There's none.
Zero.
Oh, we don't have anything at the Reed's Brook?
Not at the middle school, at the high school.
That's good.
In transportation, how's that handle?
They would have.
They have to get here today. I think at $150, wasn't it to help cover the cost of some of the equipment?
Yeah, I mean, there are some costs, probably football, more cost with football than a lot of sports. So I think it's only fair that we ask them, first of all.
I agree.
Youth, youth charges $125. So they've been paying that all along. It's not going to be a, you know, it's not going to be a surprise to them.
So Karen, getting back to your point, we'll just make sure that's in the minutes and the board has embraced that and moving forward.
And I would just, probably when it comes to fields and property and improvements in school, that's probably a building committee charge to make sure that with some of the other ongoing conversations we've talked with towns, there's an opportunity there actually to meld some of the requested sharing or improvements or permissions into the ballfield discussions or some of those at the same time and do that.
And maybe some grants that, at least over the years, we've discussed whether grants are advantageous for the municipal side and the school side. Can we draw some supplemental monies in that way as well?
Who, who on your staff, or do you have anyone on your staff that, you know, keeps an eye on that? Reagan, do you keep an eye on grants?
On grants?
Like possible?
Ruth Lyons does occasionally, and the gift in the town that I think Brittany and I are trying to do on the school-based health center concept. So we probably are to some degree looking at that, but.
And I do receive a monthly fee of grants that are in? Okay.
There are probably no grants that are specific to like athletic, are there? All the maintaining ballfields and stuff?
Yeah. They're usually affiliates with an organization that, like that, I know specifically the US Tennis Association, because I'm trying to get the tennis courts in Winterport redone. So they offer funding for that, so I can kind of dig around and see if there's any.
You don't want those big cracks in court? But bear in mind, when you talk about. When he's mentioned, you know, donations and all that, consider the fact that our premier baseball field was given to us. Our premier football field was given to us by fundraising and through altruism of many folks in the community. That's how it's always been, and it's not funded under the school funding formula. Although middle schools are entitled to a multipurpose field, which does have regulations, and if they're not met, my guess is there may be funding even to make those improvements. Depending on the grade level, high school has multipurpose baseball slash softball, and usually football in, allowed in the capital budget for a new location. Middle school's different, and I think it's just a multipurpose and maybe a softball. But anyway, if you look that up.
I would also point out that Athletic Committee about the Wagner School, you know, Frankfurt has a wonderful little league.
Right.
It's presently underutilized. We don't even have a little league team anymore. And there are at least one coach from Winterport. And there are, at least one coach from Winterport is using it to practice. I mean, that's a beautiful field with all the drainage dugouts, you name it. It's just sitting there.
Wow. Alan, is that an easy sized field or?
Yeah, it's regulation little, like little league field. We've had tournaments there. We've had softball tournaments there in the past. It's a beautiful field. It was built, you know, by local contractors, you know, it was all zoned in. But it's like on four feet of gravel. It's got all the drainage in it. It's a beautiful field. The dugouts were donated by, I think Viking lumber.
I think our field is built on four feet of clay.
The drainage is awesome.
It has a brand new set of bleachers that were put in. And as soon as they were put in, there was no longer a little league team, so they've never been used and I know.
Well, Alan's talked about those, a little league field, and our field is a regulation sized field.
Oh, they're two different sizes?
We're talking ninety.
Ninety foot.
So is Friday's school.
Well, the practice field.
Middle school's ninety feet as well.
Might help the little guys.
Well, Farm, I mean Farm and Little League.
Little League and young youth. I mean, those Frankfurt kids are playing in Winterport.
Yes, they are.
They are, yeah.
So.
All right, great. Good report out, Rick.
Yeah. I didn't have a report, so you don't, you guys don't know what I said?
No, I don't, I forgot it all.
Whatever I said.
Building video, Alan.
Yeah, we had a meeting at six o'clock tonight. Two major points of discussion revolved around a drainage issue at the Smith School in Winterport. We have a deteriorated drain pipe that's leaking, needs to be replaced, and it crosses a budding property. And the question is whether or not we have easement rights. Are we going to get them from these people? And replacing the pipe because it is an issue. So we're looking into that. The second issue is the, with the water district wanting to place the tank on school property. And I guess we'll probably discuss that under eleven C a little bit later on.
That's what I can't.
They're looking to move forward with that project. They have to build that this year to get that money.
Yeah.
And they're waiting for some go aheads to pass.
Anything else primarily?
That's pretty much it. We discussed the propane tanks and all the same issues.
We had a similar issue with drainage. If you leave my office and go down the right side, not the wrong way going down to one A, there's a house right there on the right and we built, Rob, you might remember, when we built this school, we actually brought that house into the project somewhat to eliminate the runoff. And that, I'm not explaining this well, but that big corridor right there with the drainage, Rob, you can say it's very lucky. But basically took care of that drainage issue into that home back in two thousand and eleven, twelve.
Yeah, there was a, uh, a flooding problem with higher storm events. So that's why that basin is there.
Basin, there you go.
Slows down, the peak flows and lets it go. It's flooding their yard like it used to.
Exactly.
This is a little different. This is probably a fifty-year-old drainage way that's been slowly improved over the years. But the infrastructure in it has rusted out, so it's now causing basement wet problems. Uh, it probably should have, it never had an easement. It probably is a prescriptive easement because it's been there so long. But it, it would make sense and they're great neighbors to, and easements make great neighbors also, is to formalize a replacement, even if it's temporary construction, even to go in. Uh, we think it might be able to dovetail with the water tank conversation because it's, you know, mobilized forces at the same time could lower the cost, be done. Um, it's the same parties involved, so to speak. You have the town, you have the right of way, you have the school, you have the others, so.
Good.
We have no education committee report on, right?
Correct.
Policy? Do you have anything other than?
No, but the only thing, um, I forgot to bring up at our last policy meeting, uh, was that we are going to, I think within the next three months, you mentioned we're going to start having the regulations.
Yes.
Accompany the policies, you know, online as well.
Oh, online, great.
Yeah.
Gloria and I met on that before. She went on vacation. When she returns, we'll have a strategy to do that. That's our goal.
Fantastic.
It'll take a while, bud.
Yeah, that's all right.
Great. Uh, UTC, Alan, is there anything on that?
I mean, no meetings till September.
Okay. And can we?
Budget, the past, last night in fact.
Yes.
That's where I was working.
That is all.
Do you have anything to report out on such specific?
Uh, no, I want to say a little meeting. We'll get to that.
Great. And, um, community relations?
Yep, um, our last community relations committee, um, meeting was on July twentieth. Um, we discussed issues related to budget communications that the Facebook page seemed to be, um, being fairly successful. But also, we're still working on possibly formalizing what are, what are going to be top-tier events? Things that would actually need an event schedule, um, on the page as opposed to posting about, um, athletic committee meetings or, or the regular board meetings. Um, the RSU twenty-two website has already undergone, Nate's been making some really quick changes, which has been fantastic. The, the calendar now appears, um, on the, on the homepage. When you come to homepage, it's on the, the left side in the splash. And, um, at our last meeting, we had, um, four community members there. Um, Jake Metzler was there, Karen Field, although a teacher, was there as a, uh, community member. And Cora and Lauren Swalick were both there. And Lauren actually mentioned that when you click on district calendar and you expect to see what's happening in the district, you get the education year calendar, which in terms of the actual terminology, that is the district calendar. It makes sense in from that standpoint. But anybody who actually wants to know when a meeting is happening, it's useless for them. But now this calendar is right there. Um, it is, I haven't double-checked with Nate, but I'm fairly certain that you can, uh, on the bottom right, it's got a little Google Plus. You click on that and you can then link your, your, your Google calendar to that. And I, I don't use Apple. I think it works with Apple as well, but. So you could actually have the meetings populate on your phone or on your tablet, on your computer automatically. So that would be a, a great thing for people to, to be able to catch, um, information that way. Um, Nate's made a number of other changes. You can like our Facebook page from the RSU twenty-two webpage now and a couple of other things that he's done. Uh, we had, uh, we discussed, um, the community members that were there took their time, read through our frequently asked questions document, and then we had a lot of discussion about that document. And it was fantastic. Um, and it really was very helpful in putting finishing touches on it and making it much more, um, understandable from the perspective of somebody who doesn't sit around this table all the time and talk about these things. And I think it, we were able to post it. Um, it, I think it did a very good job of answering some of the questions, giving people the basics. And if nothing else, I think it will help people ask the questions they actually really want to get the answer to. Because I think sometimes a question is posed to us, we respond to it, and the response we're giving them, although it may make sense to what was asked, isn't really what the person is looking for, for information. So having this better base of information, baseline of information will help people, um, with that. Um, we have, the, the communication plan is really what we're going to tackle next. You know, making sure that people knew what was coming next via, um, the budget has been, you know, the, the really, the elephant in the room for us. But now John, Amanda, myself, and Nate, and Regan, uh, if she's able to come to those meetings as well, are going to work on how do we communicate things out, um, going forward. And we have, there are a lot of great ideas and I'm hopeful that the community members who have come will continue coming to these meetings and, and help us with those ideas because it makes a world of difference. What we think needs to be communicated is not always what people are interested in hearing about. So we need to, to marry those two things together. Um, and that's about it. We don't have another meeting scheduled yet, but we will at the end of this meeting schedule our next.
Great. Scott, thanks for the.
I got a quick question for you. So I noticed that like last Friday, communication, you or somebody put all of that on Facebook. Everything, all of our packet, everything that's coming to us is going, yep, to the community. Which is fine, I don't care, but we've always kept, if we hire an administrator or we hire a coach, we always keep that, for some reason, a secret until Wednesday night. So now it's out on Friday. Is that okay or?
Well, that's, that's a slight trick and that's why I'll have to communicate with Scott. And Scott was very good in picking up on the agenda notes, for example. The agenda notes do not go public.
Oh, they, okay.
Those agenda notes that you receive as board members are just, um, intended to give you background relevant to the position you may have to take as a board member, but they're not shared with the public.
Okay, so that.
But to add to your question, if something is a personnel matter, that would not go out on public highway. I'd need to let Scott know that, so we don't do that. That is exactly the reason why you received the mailing from me that we're going in tonight's executive session. Okay, that's why I didn't put that there, because of what you're asking.
Right.
And we have actually, we've also, um, initially I was, um, using the snipping tool on Windows ten to create JPGs and PNGs to put on the Facebook page. But now Nate and Gloria are able to create a public folder that I can link to. So it takes, and because I, I didn't want to be the one responsible for making the decision of what can go out and what can't go out. Because I have fairly good instinct for that, but my good instincts, you know, might lead the way to legal trouble.
Thank you for that clarification, Scott, because Gloria and I discuss that quite often. So it actually sifted through Gloria to Scott.
Right, it's, it's a new system and then we're, we're trying to get it all working because it, right now, vacation times came along and Nate was on vacation and Gloria was on vacation and we were trying to make things work. But going forward, what I'll be posting on Facebook will be a link to a Google folder that I didn't have any hand in putting together. It's just going to be, I'll post it to Facebook.
Yep.
What about the, are we getting the, um, town councils, the documentation?
Yes, we are.
About the exhibits?
Yes, we are.
Just on a short.
That's going to all point towns as well.
Fantastic. Um, policy consideration, John?
Uh, yes, this one's kind of a revisit, but a little bit of a change. Um, so this is being brought forward for first reading. Um, the change is on B, uh, section B, number two at the bottom. Um, we added for the peace and usefulness of the school. So looking, I guess, for, uh, a motion to approve that first reading.
I move approve the first reading?
Second.
A policy jick.
And, um, for a discussion, can I just ask what pro, is this was just like a annual review and then somebody decided to add that line or was, why was that?
Well, actually, it came back from what Michelle mentioned about forty-five minutes ago. We wanted, and what he asked is a question. We wanted to look at this policy again to make sure it did for us what we want to do and also put us in a very proactive stance for next year. So just a refinement, just making sure it needs to be what it needs to be. And then we came up with the language that John just alluded to.
And that one, which actually is pulled out of the main school.
Yes.
Law.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a, it's actually related to school suspension, but it kind of gave the overall feel here as well. And I'm wondering after hearing Michelle talk whether you might want to even add that to the harassment policy. I don't know.
Yeah.
That's something, revisit that, but for the overall peace and usefulness of the school.
It's, it's cross-references, but we could add another point.
Yeah.
You have to be careful with that one cross-reference against the student rights policies. It's been delved into a while ago. The teachers while employed actually are not protected by First Amendment rights. And students, but the students are not bound by the same, they are protected by First Amendment rights. So the point becomes when does someone exercising their First Amendment right start to cause a disruption that affects the peacefulness and usefulness of the school? And that, to me, there's probably a lot of case law out there for that. It gets into, that's a big mess. It's happening all over the place right now. So just be careful because there's probably a lot of cross-intamination of those issues. And, uh, we have to be careful on all fronts, uh, that we're not, again, looking at a bookend as we've always done. It makes it pretty clear and how to administer it, but it's some of those lesser issues that are the tougher calls. But it's an extreme case, it's usually an easy call, but it's.
You're saying so that language there could be an issue?
No, I don't, not, not this particular one, but as we dig further into the issue, be careful we don't go too far the other way. Because peace and usefulness could be construed to be, uh, basically silencing of someone's ability to, to exercise their First Amendment rights.
That's interesting.
Any other, um, comments or discussion around the policy before we? Good, um, we had a motion, we had a second, so all those in favor? Fantastic. And old business, round district budget meeting, referendum validation vote.
So these, uh, results moved from unofficial last night at ten o'clock to now official results. They're pretty self-explanatory. They're on our website. Uh, people in the audience, if you did not pick one up, they are available at the, at the table here. Board members received this this afternoon, so it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, you can draw a lot of extrapolations from this, a lot of innuendos, if you will, but some we've already lived through tonight. We were pushing almost fourteen hundred voters back in June and now we're roughly, what, uh, seven hundred and twenty plus or minus, thereabouts. Uh, you can interpret the summary with the, um, advisory article, however you choose. Um, any questions of board, of board members where we are? So the good news is the budget is endorsed, the budget's passed. Uh, the budget season this year truthfully was from about September to now August. Because remember, that question's been asked many times from our citizenry, when does budget season start? Normally it started like in November or December, but this year it was basically eleven months. I do want to accentuate though, aside from this, we need to be vigilant insofar as paying attention to the new funding formula that's going to be coming down the road the next couple of years. That's going to be of significant significance to the public schools in state of Maine. What's the composition of that funding formula? Maine School of Management's going through a very significant, um, transformation right now. They have a new executive director as of two weeks ago. The Maine School Super Tennis Association reopened their position, which concerns me greatly. Regan and I have talked about that a little bit because they give us great support. And usually they give us the heads up as to what's being discussed in the legislative process. We will lean on Martha Harris, our chair of the state board, quite a bit to pay attention with respect to what's going on in the House and Senate for the next twelve months. Comments on the results?
I'd just like to reflect on it. I thought the second question was excellent because, you know, a lot of people were commenting after the last, uh, vote. Now, the board didn't know whether, you know, how to respond to whether it was too high or too low. But it was interesting, if you look at this, in all cases, um, you know, a very small voter turnout, but in all cases, with the exception of Newburgh where it was a tie, the most, uh, most people found it to be acceptable in all cases. However, if you add up the two highs and the two lows, it always exceeded the acceptable. So there's still those that more people disagree that it's acceptable and agree, however, it was majority. And in all cases, the two highs, uh, surpassed the two lows. So, uh, anyway, an interesting reflection on that.
I have an opinion on this for whatever it's worth. We had seven hundred and twenty-five people vote on our school budget. So reflect on the town meeting that was held in your municipal in the last two months. How many people were there? How many people were in Hampden to vote on the Hampden town budget?
The district budget meeting?
No, the town budget.
Oh, the town budget.
And the answer's seven. So when you talk about, when you talk about the transparency or the people to participate in talking about a budget, seven hundred and twenty-five and fourteen hundred in June, twenty-one hundred people had a voice in the budget that we oversee. As a resident of my community, I'm talking about as taxpayer now, now I do super tennis, so just kind of bear with me. I don't have the ability to vote on my budget.
Correct.
That could be a good, that could be a good debate someday when we had nothing else on the agenda. But that's my point, and I've discussed that with Mr. Jennings a number of times, is I don't have the opportunity to go to a town meeting in Hampden. Jane, do we? I'm looking at Jane. We don't have that opportunity. We elect our town officials, which is right. The charter says, you know, that you, that you go through the municipal officials. But yet we're allowing and permitting and enjoying the participation level of our citizens of twenty-one hundred to vote on our budget. You do in Frankfurt, Alan, right, you have a town meeting, Winterport and Newburgh, but Hampden does not.
And Rob, what was it Hampden, this RSU twenty-two makes up what percentage of the town of Hampden's budget, overall budget?
Well, it depends how you look at it. If you look at it for gross amounts spent, the school budget is still less than the total amount spent on town. It was like, uh, I, I used to remember the numbers now, but it was like, uh, six million on schools, six point six million or so. And I think the town spent seven, seven point eight or something like that. However, when they report it, uh, out to taxpayers, um, for what goes to property tax, they first subtract, and this is policy, this is standard. You subtract all the revenue that comes in from excise, car registration, things like that. So it lowers the town net expenditures about four point eight million. So it, it makes it appear that the school is six point six and the town is four point eight. When it comes to total, the school is slightly less, or it's less than the total spent on all things that the town pays. But when it comes to total, the school is slightly less, or it's less than the total spent on all things that the town pays money for. But as far as the taxpayer is concerned, it is higher than, than the net balance that's left to be paid for by the, um, by the, the property taxpayer.
Couple of, couple of other points I would share with you, and I'll be quiet. The referendum validation process came to bear in the late nineties, ninety-seven or ninety-eight, thereabouts. RSU twenty-two, MSAD twenty-two, was either the first or second district to have a budget referendum validation. Brumford was the other one. So we've been having this for twenty years. Also, let me remind you, every three years, we must ask the voters, do you wish to continue to have the referendum validation? You know, the last six times we've asked it, they've said yes. So don't be surprised next time we ask, if our voters say, no, we don't want the referendum validation anymore, we just want the district budget meeting. So the logistics of our process, I guess my point to you is the logistics of our process is quite different, even among our four municipalities. Which I find intriguing.
But as we, at that point, if we looked at this year, the outcome would have been the same. If we'd have gone with our district budget meeting, basically our budget would have been not passed. Same, same thing.
Well, it would have passed.
Well, it would have passed, because it had to. But if, if the sentiments of the audience were, you know, could have gone that way, they were basically against the budget.
Right, but the point, when you have your district budget meeting and not the validation, when you're home that night, you have a budget, you're a dozen. You don't need to validate it.
Yeah.
Which I think really is, I would, I would just be, I would not favor that. You know, that's down the line.
So anyway, I think we had a long process, you folks did a great job, I think we learned a lot. I think we can take advantage of that experience. And hopefully next year, I'll, uh, share the sentiments of our outgoing Assistant Superintendent. He thinks next year is going to be great with optimism of money flowing freely from the state. Ian and I have a little bit of different viewpoint on that, but I'll give him the credit that he'll take.
He was right this year, though.
He was right there, yeah, he was right this year. But I spent quite experience and I thanked the citizenry, those seven hundred and twenty-five people that really are, did a good level of participation, including, I think we had, what, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, thereabouts, in the last district budget meeting. Roughly one forty the first one, so it had good participation.
For GLI, that's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
So I, I do have a follow-up to this. Tonight, before you depart, I need to have your signature on the assessments. Uh, that will go out to each of the four towns tomorrow. So we will send them around like we did with the previous documents, and you need to have your signatures in order. Okay, so if you don't leave your seats, that's best, okay? Because we'll be there.
Can I say another quick question? So I just want to clarify, I had a teacher ask me last time, so the K one R.
Yes.
That's not just for McGrath, it's also for Smith Schools.
That's correct. Matter of fact, I'm going to be, uh, I'm going to be sending out in the next few days exactly the assignment of those teachers, where, what schools they're going to be in. So K one R is district one.
Yeah, it's K one, okay, yeah.
K one R. The other thing you need to sign going around is the validation of the referendum votes that we just talked about.
Yeah, they have to be in the same order?
No.
Like last time, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, inspection of the school system. You had an exhibit for this.
Yes, we've discussed that in past meetings, so I contacted the Department of Education, hopefully the overview by Joanne Allen. I gave you the appropriate tape. Basically, we can have, they don't do the, what you'd call a, an audit of the school district, they can come in and do an inspection. What she really recommends is maybe reaching out to Maine School of Management for that organization to come in and give us an overview of what we do in this district. From policy development, from the fiscal standpoint, from hiring practices and so on. So basically, it's up to the, the board as to what you want to do. Regan and I talked about this a little bit. I put this akin similar to NIESC accreditation. We have a third party come in, they have standards, they come in and say, how are you doing with respect to hiring practices, policy development, fiscal, transportation, et cetera. So it really is up to the board with respect to how we'd like to approach. Do we want to have someone, for example, from Maine School of Management come and present to us what they could offer to us? Uh, that new person I alluded to fifteen minutes ago was a gentleman named Steve Bailey. Steve's been on the job for three weeks. Uh, he was the former superintendent down in the Damascada, Great Salt Bay area, yes, Great Salt Bay, Damascada. So if we want to have Steve come to us and speak about that, we can do that. However, you'd like to proceed on this topic.
I, I would recommend that we consider that we have an entity come to us to educate us about the menu of options. Because I think from the community side of things, we've heard different suggestions to us, recommendations. But to get definition about what those suggestions mean, what would be the degree of evaluation or inspection for any one of those suggestions would be important for us all to understand. So just an avenue for us to consider.
The DOE would, wouldn't be offering us any financial audit type things, or right?
That, that's my understanding, that's correct.
I would suggest too, that, you know, part of what the Community Relations Committee is going to be doing, is reaching out to some of the groups that, that got in touch with us. And talking about what questions is it you want to have answered? So if we can simultaneously talk to the community about what do you want to have answered? And then talk to some groups about what answers can you give us? Then we'll, we'll have the information, we need to marry those two things together and get the best possible.
So why not be in contact with Maine School of Management? Maybe we can come, have them come the first or second meeting in September, dovetail that with what you just mentioned, Scott, and see what we can have as far as deliverables.
Yeah.
The other thing as part of that is maybe reaching out to our auditor. Um, we were having a conversation with a community member, Dave Barrett, um, after one of our budget meetings. And he suggested that we look at a different type of audit next time around. Um, that is on, when we have our annual audit in December, he would also be looking at the, um, agreed upon procedures. Of procedures, so that he can say, basically say if there's areas of improvement around process and procedures. If we have protections in place for the district as it relates to finances. And he felt that just that alone was put a lot of, some of the concerns, um, to bed. And I can't remember what he called that audit, but I'm sure Craig would know.
Actually, Regan and I spoke about that today, and we're gonna actually schedule a finance committee meeting for the end of the month. And talk with our auditors about what our different options would be.
Okay, very good, we'll follow up on that, thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm facilitating, by the way. Um, discuss and act on price adjustments for food service.
Kathy, do you want to give an overview to your exhibit, please?
So we haven't had, can we just stand up here?
Yeah, can we, yeah, Kathy, so we. I am working on seeing what we get for a, a system for the school board meeting, by the way, so that's in the process of, microphones and so.
Oh, okay, I'm not real loud. Um, so we haven't had a price increase in two years on just, on the, the students that pay for the, um, the full meal. Um, and so every year we do have to put in, um, some numbers into a pricing tool through the, the state. And then there's a, um, there's actually an amount that we're supposed to increase. And, um, so we're, when I did all the calculations, um, it's telling us to increase twenty cents, but ten cents is the most that we can increase. So I'm asking about doing a ten cent increase, um, for just the students that pay, it doesn't affect the reduced price, that's the same. And the free students, of course, it doesn't affect them. Uh, and it's just for the per meal price. Uh, and that just helps keep us in line with our food costs and our, you know, labor costs for what we're doing.
So in summary, Kathy, we're asking for a five cent increase in breakfast and a ten cent increase in lunch.
That's correct.
As you outlined in your chart. So I would ask for the board's endorsement of Kathy's recommendation for this school year.
So.
Sorry.
So Kathy, I have a question. Um, I am, I pay for hot lunch usually once or twice a week in the fall, and then about four to five days a week in the spring. And, um, I would, I got really excited because I'm, I'm okay with paying more, knowing that there's variety, local, healthy options. And I saw that you used, I think, all three of those words. So is that your plan?
Yes, yes.
That's great, because I think.
First, I'll kind of assess where we're at and then introduce items. We actually just picked green beans, and I'm going to do some processing of those, so that we'll have those in the fall. Because we don't have enough students right now to utilize all of them. So we'll be using some of the school garden items, as well as expanding our purchasing of local. And then just reviewing our menu items, moving to more scratch cooking probably, and increasing the variety.
Great, and then I just wanted to provide some feedback, I provided this a couple of years ago. Um, I, I feel like our district could improve on how we, um, share the information for free and reduced lunch applications with parents. And identify students who may, um, be qualified, but we haven't gotten the paperwork back from the parents and taken an active role to get that paperwork back. Um, it's been my experience as a parent that the paperwork sent home, um, that first week or what have you, and then it's, that's it. And unless a parent really knows about it and is actively looking for it, I can see where sometimes in families that might be, um, that's not being read or returned.
I agree, it is a problem, and I will work on more diligently on that. And I'll, I'll, you should see more marketing, um, I think, but I'll be really focusing on trying to get things out. But I'm going to try to get to, do all the open houses and maybe try to capture some parent interaction there. And then we usually can tell who might need to, you know, might, you know, want to fill out the form and maybe do more phone calling and contacting, so. Good suggestion, and on the list, so.
Okay.
Are these, I'm sorry, are these, like, are these forms that we could put online, or are they online? I mean, could, this is something that could be district-wide, and like, that's something that I could actually share via the Facebook page, that if somebody wants to, they can just click on it, have a PDF there.
Is there any reason why we cannot put those online?
We can do that, no?
Yeah, they're not carbon copy.
No, they can be online, and there's all different, you know, ways to get to some of the people, I think that.
So we'll talk to Nate Savage on this.
And they can be submitted throughout the year, correct?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so it's not just a, like.
No, it's not just a first week of school or anything, so.
So financials change within a family.
That's right, people moving in.
And family?
I wonder how much guidance counselors talk with students or families as they identify students who may have issues.
Kristin, do you have any idea on that, like at your school?
I really don't. And I think, I think one of the.
I think they have a sense for who.
And I think that's it, I think it's a sensitive, and just in my own experience, it's a lot of parents that they're embarrassed to say they need this help. So a quiet conversation, so that no paper comes with the child back to the class that says, I'm getting free lunch or I'm getting reduced lunch. And, I mean, I always had in my classroom, everybody passed in an envelope, whether they had free or reduced, or they were paying. So nobody in the classroom knew, I'm the only one that knew from my sheet. I think that's one of the big, well, I mean, in my experience, that was one of the biggest reasons parents did not do it, because they did not want the embarrassment. That they were struggling or partly through the year they lost their job, and now they could use some help. You knew it because you saw what the child was bringing into school for food. You knew they lost their job, so a quiet conversation.
Right, I'm wondering, maybe if there's like a way to submit it via email to an inbox at the school? So it can be electronic submission rather than paper.
I think, I think it's just the, um, ability to connect with the people that need the help. And through the guidance office and those kinds of, they know, I mean, the teachers know, that, and there are other avenues that, that you know. And to have somebody reach out, some may say no, and others may say yes, I just didn't, I don't want my child being singled out as having free or reduced lunch. So you come up with a little system and it works great, nobody knows.
Yeah, I, actually, last week we had a review of our summer program in Smith. And so I talked with that reviewer about some ideas specifically on getting more applications, so I have a few things.
So I would ask for formal vote endorsement of the recommendations.
So any more discussion, we had a motion, a second, so. All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to go back to old business, because I've forgotten about an adjustment in the agenda. Um, in regarding to the sabbatical leave for, uh, two thousand seventeen eighteen for Ambrosian Noise.
I'm following up on Karen's letter that was written on July seventeenth, the next to last paragraph, basically that has been included in the budget. And final approval will be continued on the budget. Now we know the budget's endorsed, I would ask for the board's formal endorsement to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen sabbatical leave request by Ambrosian Noise.
Someone.
Second.
Great, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Thank you. So Mr. Tracy, you and I can talk about that tomorrow morning, because Bill is obviously anxious to make sure we have that. Uh, teacher I mentioned forty-five minutes ago ready for you for September, and the children on the twenty-ninth of August.
Karen, did we have the water tower as old?
It's new.
It was new or old?
I put it under old, so that's the next one, because we talked about it before, Eve, remember Eve mentioned it.
It's a continuation.
So I, that's all right, Karen, I'm with you. So now we go to the water district.
Okay.
So we were just given an update, um, by Paul Moniak, who was retained by the district to basically just monitor the, what's happening within, uh, the Winterport, the water district. It's, currently there's an aging water tower that's actually on town property. For folks that are familiar, um, there's a, it's a path, but it's also a utility corridor that goes from Wagner down to, uh, the town park, the Victoria Park. Uh, the tower can be seen from the, um, ball field that is in slight disrepair, that we talked about earlier. Um, the new location of the water tower they're proposing, they would actually leave the other one in place and operational until it ceases to provide value. It would provide a backup, if you will, is about twenty-four feet higher, would provide about ten pounds additional pressure for firefighting and groundwater. Uh, it's actually proposed to go on RSU District property on the Wagner, uh, school site. Um, it would be, um, not blocking the cross-country trails or the utility quarters, but it would be situated, basically, as you go into Wagner, and you go to the parking lot on the right. It would be in the woods right to the right of that parking lot. Um, it, it is being funded, uh, through a grant that requires that the money be spent, uh, by a certain period of time, or they lose their funding. So they're in a bit of a situation now, where in order to advance the completion of the design, so that the construction and the planning can occur, including legal, final legal documents, et cetera. They need really a blessing from the board that we're okay with the, the concept. And given the timing, uh, there may not be another board meeting before that would have to be finalized. So we talked about, uh, the fact that there probably is no funds to acquire the land or even pay for the easement. But we did talk about future potential revenue sources such as cell tower installations on the water tower that the school would benefit. So in, perhaps putting together a lease agreement, uh, that would probably be for whatever term, for whatever amount, uh, that we would allow or authorize the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to continue those discussions, to acquire that paperwork, to work with the water district and their engineers, um, to basically allow it to keep moving. Because if we miss a month, they probably lose the money and that won't happen. So where we're at right now is the, the building committee, and Ellen, you can, uh, fill in where we left off. We, we voted to recommend that the board, uh, uh, grant approval for the superintendent, the assistant superintendent to advance that conversation and for any legal documentation that would need to take place. Uh, and to convey to the water district and to the town that we're willing to work and move forward on that. It did somewhat dovetail with the conversation we had about drainage, because there's a conversation about compensation. Even economy of scale struck us that if they're going to have equipment out there installing water lines and pipes and things like that. We're, we were just talking about a situation that would require a separate contract for that, that we might find a way to, uh, include that as part of the conversation. That maybe in lieu of a payment for, uh, the lease or even the, uh, the use of that, that they might, uh, in some fashion, reduce or relax the cost for us to do that project. Even if it's just combining it with the other projects, which would probably lower the cost of a standalone project. So, um, we're looking for board, uh, endorsement or, or, uh, a motion that the board would, uh, uh, grant the authority to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to negotiate with the water district to allow that process to move forward. Uh, for a visual, um, maybe Regan, Regan, you could send around the document that was shared with us that showed the change. Uh, it's a very simple document, this were, and I can hold this up so people can see, it's pretty self-explanatory. You can see the, the existing tank, and then the proposed location for the new tank further up the hill. And the property line is right around the middle of those two, so, uh, it would benefit the school with better protection, better water pressure. But it would also, I think, uh, benefit the, uh, the town as well. So there's, there's some synergy there.
When would this be constructed, Rob?
They need to start this fall, or they, the construction has to start this fall, or they lose their grant.
They actually said they have to complete.
Complete it.
Installation of the tank. So they've got a real tight time schedule.
Yeah.
And they're concerned about having engineering and surveying stuff done, and then the school saying, no, we don't want to do it. So they want some assurance from the board endorsement that the bill will move forward.
The Winterport Water District is not exactly flush with cash, so if they pay for engineering services and then they lose that money, that's a huge hit for them.
I'm sure you discussed this with the committee, Rob, but there's no risk for the school committee, is there? School district?
Again...
No downside?
Right, the, the, the most important piece, I think, would be the lease agreement, which, whether it's, you know, a dollar a year for 99 years or whatever the term is, just so there's a legal form, it's, it's the things about maintenance, access, you know, security, to stay away from it, et cetera, all the things you would, I can assure you, there are model documents out there everywhere for water tappers, but also the potential for revenue. Again, most people underestimate that the highest point of land is usually a target for cell tower, other installations, and we, we would certainly want a part of that conversation if we're the landowner slash leaseholder, not give away all the rights to what happens in that, that box.
But they would be in charge of all the maintenance or any issues, I mean, around that, even though it's on our land?
Absolutely.
Right, and they'll be fencing it, so.
Okay. So the formal motion is to approve the moving forward with the project discussions?
With the project discussions, again, there's no cost to the school, and that would be, again, when it comes to the lease, I would, the model would be drawn up by the water district, and to our satisfaction, it would require our time, it might require that we have our legal counsel look at it, we might spend some money there, but I think that's money well spent to make sure the document is okay, and again, the building committee members are available for dial-in between now when it happens as well.
So is your, is your motion, motion charging Reagan or Rick with...
The authority, it's the authority, that's correct.
Great. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Right, I think we can set meeting dates, right?
Yes, you can, no, you write down the starting date.
All right. Okay, so you have a meeting you want to set up, Wally, Rick?
Yeah, the AdHoc Substances Use Committee, I talked with Brittany, and we're looking at Monday, August 14th at 6:00 PM.
And is policy meeting on the 15th?
15th, that's correct.
Because you can't go on that one, right?
Wally, is the correct title of the committee still, when you refer to that as substance abuse, substance?
Substance use.
Okay.
Would be a more correct term.
Substance abuse, okay.
Substance use.
Oh, substance use, I'm sorry.
Use?
Substance use. Got it. Substance use.
Okay. And then I know Scott, you wanted to set up a meeting.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to have another meeting of the Communication, Community Relations Committee. Really, I think next week would be great, John. Oh, actually, with Amanda not being here, we'd have to doodle it anyway, probably.
I would suggest you do the doodle.
Yes. I'll handle that.
No, that's the central office.
Okay, let's see, our next ed committee is on the next board meeting, which is September 6th. We all know when school starts. I want to give you a reminder again, if you're available on the management day, the 24th is at 10 o'clock, the in-service activity that we talked about this evening. You can see new teacher orientation is going to be held on the 22nd, 23rd.
Is that Transgender Workshop, is that here?
Yes, right here in the Performing Arts Center. That day starts at 7:30 with breakfast, just, okay, just to remind everyone, we start that day at 7:30, 8:30 for breakfast with all employees here at the Performing Arts Center. And then we'll have activities for faculty and staff and administration up until about 10, let's say probably 11:15 that day. So if you want breakfast and enjoy the session at 10 o'clock, just come to Hampden Academy for the Performing Arts Center on the 24th.
But the LGBTQ session will be at 10.
Yes, sir.
Finance needs a meeting also. So...
Budget, we'd be glad to yield its calendar to finance for a couple of meetings, since we had so many special meetings. We'll, we'll take the hiatus for a little while, I'm sure we'll come back up with a couple months.
Okay, so...
Did you look into any meeting times, Reagan?
Yes, so 3:30 start time can work, and we'd be interested in that, because it would be a time where faculty members would have concluded their school day, and so they could participate in a finance committee meeting if they were interested in that. And our accountant is still under working hours, so she could attend as well, so that would be a, a good time.
How about the week of the 21st? Is that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays?
Any of those days works. I would say Tuesday or Wednesday would be the better of the three.
Do you have a preference, Ellen? Either, Tuesday's fine with me, then. Is Tuesday okay? Do you have...
I don't know, I'm on vacation.
One, one, one.
It would be similar.
You'd be ready to go in for a break.
Okay. So Tuesday, the 20, whatever that is?
22nd.
22nd?
3:30, 30.
Any other meetings that we need to set? Any other committee meetings? Again? All right. Fantastic. We are now going to move into an executive session. I will need someone to read the language written in the notes to make the formal motion to move into executive session. Please, and thank you all for coming tonight.
To make a motion to enter executive session to discuss a legal matter per 1 MRSA subsection 405, 6E.
Give me a second.
Salute.